Aloha mai kako, aloha. Aloha. Well, welcome everybody in the room and everybody online. My name is Samantha Decourt and I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Midili Neighborhood Board, number 36, and I am calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 16, 2024. We are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. Let me see, we'll go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. That's my left, your right. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes, officials' monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under 10 minutes. Sergeant and arms will be keeping time, so please end your comments when the timer goes off. I will also ask you to conclude your comments. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your manao on our agenda items, and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. And with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and open up in Pule. We do want to lift up Uncle Buff Kealana. He has been a pillar in our community for many, many years. He has been very much responsible on putting Nanakuli out, include the whole Whanau coast on the map. The nation knows about Makaha Beach because of Uncle Buff Kealana. He experienced a fall, so he's at home receiving his healing. I did just get off the phone with his family, and they do covet our prayers, and they thank us for keeping him in prayer. So if you can just close our eyes and bow our heads. Father, we just come before you in the name of Jesus, and Lord, we thank you. You're such a good God. Father, we lift up Uncle Buff right now, and we thank you. It is your blood that heals all sickness and disease. So we just cover him with your healing power from the top of his head to the soles of his feet. Supply his family with everything that they need to properly take care of him. Any nurses, anybody that comes to help, Lord Jesus, will not only be a relief to our family, Father God, but gives us an opportunity to serve a man who has done so much in our community and a good way to honor him. And Father, we also lift up this meeting to you. We thank you that it be in decency and in order. Allow us to move with grace, move with respect, but then also move with order and accomplishing all agenda items. So we thank you, we give you all the praise and all the honor in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen, very good. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started with Honolulu Fire Department. I see that they're in the room. If you could make your way to the microphone and give a report. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Procheco. I'm the Watch Captain at Nanakuli Fire Station, Engine Company, 3rd Platoon. Wanted to share some statistics and friendly fire tip with you folks. Nanakuli Fire Station went to 138 calls last month. One structure fire, two brush fires. We had 12 nuisance fires, which are either rubbish, outside structures, and a couple of activated alarms. We went to 116 medicals. We had four motor vehicle collisions that we also attended to and one mountain rescue. Beyond that, the fire safety tip for this month, it talks about how Hawaii is some of the highest average relative humidity in the country. When it is too humid, our bodies have a hard time cooling down. This can lead to heat-related illnesses. And in the past decade, in Hawaii, the average number of hot and humid days and very warm nights have doubled due to the climate change and are expected to increase. They give a website, resilientowahu.org for information, and also just other tips, keep cool with fans and ACs. Stay in the shade, wear lightweight clothes. Loose-fitting clothing, drink plenty of water, obviously stay out of the sun. Wear a hat, take an umbrella. Check on the neighbors, especially, you know, the at-risk folks. And again, if you want more information on heat illnesses, it's www heat.com. That's my little report. Folks have any questions?
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions for HFD? Okay, Board Member Hano Hano?
Hi. I was just curious. I noticed when I drive past Depose Beach, I see like two engines that seem to be parked there recently. Is there a reason?
Yeah. For this district, what we call Battalion, the 4th Battalion, that's our site for water safety recertification. So what it, finding an open beach that's not that crowded, I guess for whatever reason, they chose that beach. And all the companies cycle through. So there's not only just the one, there's three watches of the, I'm not 100%, I think it's like seven or eight companies, I mean stations, and about 10 companies. So you times that by three, and that's what you're seeing out there. So if I'm not mistaken, it should be finishing up sometime by the beginning of next week. But that's, that's what that is, that's our water safety recertification.
Very good, thank you very much. Board Member Corona?
Yes, please. A couple of weeks ago, there was a pretty major accident on Pa'akea. Can you elaborate on the location? Was it at the dip?
It was just past the dip.
Just past the dip, so it could have been the entry and then launched out of it or something?
It would appear that was the case, yeah. It was just a matter of, from what it looked like, where I guess you kind of go with a high rate of speed on the upside, and as you land, if the wheels are turned just a little bit, soon as you land, it'll pull in that direction. It just happened to pull into those big boulders.
Yep, okay. I just wanted to confirm the location.
Yeah, but they were saying speed was an issue though.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, community in the room. Any questions for HFD? Seeing none online, seeing none. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate you, you be safe out there. Up next, we have HPD Honolulu Police Department. I believe Sergeant Fumi or Corporal Pagan will be giving the report. Corporal Pagan, take it away. Good seeing you.
I'm the Chair, Board Members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department, issued computer PC. With me tonight is Lieutenant Marino Carrera, as well as Sergeant Fumi Maroka. I have your stats for June. In June, we had 36 motor vehicle thefts, seven in our area, 26 burglaries, three in our area, 127 thefts, 16 in our area, 35 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, four in our area. There's a total of 310 citations issued, 8,454 calls for service, 1,451 in our area. I believe that's all I have. I'm open to any comments, questions, or concerns from the community of the board.
Okay, there we are. Corporal Pagan, can you hear us?
I can now, can you hear me?
We can, thank you very much. Please proceed.
I'm sorry, did you miss everything I said? Okay, sorry about that. Again, Corporal Pagan, I have Lieutenant Marino Carrera, as well as Sergeant Maroka with me tonight. I have your stats for June. In June, we had 36 motor vehicle thefts, seven in our area, 26 burglaries, three in our area, 127 thefts, 16 in our area, 35 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, four in our area, a total of 310 citations were issued, 8,454 calls for service, 1,451 in our area. And that's all I have. I'm open for any comments, questions, or concerns from the Board of the Community.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions for HPD? Board members, seeing none, community in the room, any? Oh, okay, Board Member Tector.
My question is, is it protocol? When, I mean, it may be off the charts as far as my trash bin getting stolen and them saying I needed a police report? And the police have to do a report? I don't know if it's not only city and county property, but is it you guys' property too?
No, it's not our property. However, the city does require, because although we know, we believe most times, it's the bins falling into the trash can, the truck itself. The city does require a police report just to have a report replayed. So, so yeah, it is common practice for them to request a police report.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other questions for HPD? Okay, we'll go to community. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
Okay, my name is Ramona Olivera. I live in the Nanaikupono Homestead. I, we are having a problem with no parking on Pili Okahi and on La Monia. The, when you drive by on the weekends, you cannot get by, and it's on the blan, for those of you who don't know the name of the road. You cannot get around there. You have cars sometimes five deep, and they intrude upon the roadway. And on the other side, in Pili Okahi, there is always people parking, always blockage. And then if we do call, we see the officers come. If they come, they come. They, they might as well be giving them a lay, because they just talk to them, and they leave. They don't wait till they move, or we hear, oh, I just gonna be here a little while, and then they leave. And the people are there for at least an hour more, two hours more. Sometimes they have tents there, they have, I mean, they're just making like a party over there. You know, they have a cooler, you know, there's no poles or whatever. But we just are concerned with the cars that are being there for, in the no parking area, because we have handy vans that turn around. Sometimes the fire truck comes through. Sometimes the opala comes through, and they gotta reverse many times to get through there. And they just, people that are parked there, they're just sitting down, doing nothing, and they watching them do that. They're not even encouraged to move. So we just want to address that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Again, thank you for calling 911. Do we do ask that people to call 911, there's a parking violation? The officer's responsibility when they receive a 911 call, especially for parking, is to address the complaint. How the officer decides to address it is really up to them. They are not required to give a citation every time. If they go over there, they talk to the people, the people move, and they've addressed the complaint. In the future, if you do call and the officer show up and the people do remain there, you know, sometimes because of how many cars and how long it takes, the officer may not be able to sit there to wait for everybody to move. But if they do go down there and they address it, however, the people don't move, please do call back on 911, let them know that you did call, the officer came, however, they didn't move. And if you need to, you can ask to speak to a supervisor if you feel that the officer is not doing his job or just letting it go. Again, parking complaints seem to be a really big issue throughout many of our communities, especially the older communities where the roads are smaller. So, you know, our officers that are going there and giving, you know, 20, 30 tickets, they'll try to go down there and just get people to move the vehicles. And so that people are honest, and sometimes they're not. So if they, if they don't move, please do call back and just let the officer know that they, they didn't move, and the officer can address it again.
Hi, thank you so much. Patty Kahana Mokuturiya. And I also wanted to add, if everybody knows where Subland is, and you know, it's near, it's right adjacent in a quiet Hawaiian homestead, homes. So what's happening over, especially weekends, there's two lanes of cars that are, that are just lined up to be, to go to the beach and picnic, and they're there all day. And so you can't make that turn. It's really dangerous. I was there Sunday, just to go with my Ohana them there, and my van literally couldn't make that turn. So I know in the past with Kavena, they had an emergency at the beach, and your first responders had such a difficult time making that turn because you have two car lanes in there. And so I think the solution to this is, and the, and the Board should look at either deferring this to your Parks Committee or your Transportation, because this is truly about public safety there and also the intrusion of the Hawaiian homestead people that live there. We would recommend that on the residential side, there have no parking signs there. And what it can do is it can help the HPD to now citation, you can get citations there. But you need to have space in that particular road, which is real heavily used right now, to have people can go in and out of that area. And so, you know, we want to bring it to the Board, and we want to find solutions. So you have committees. I would really encourage this kind of item, go into a committee and to come back to the Board and to have the city mayor's rep and the Department of DTS to look at this problem, the unimproved area too by Subland. What you should also do is recommend to the city, what are they going to do with that? Are they, is the city gonna put CIP money to improve that parking area? The unimproved area? So there's a lot of things going on there, but it's interrupting a lot of residents in that adjacent area. So this is why I'm here too, to bring that attention to the Board and find solutions, because something will happen where emergency vehicles will be limited to enter in and out safely. I have Kavena here. So HPD, they just need assistance with the parking situation. And, you know, when they call 911, 911, they want somebody there to address, you know, address their concerns. I'm gonna turn it to Kavena Holu, because she did want to say something. Thank you, Board, thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha mai kako, my name is Kavena Holu. So just to recap, we are saying that if there is a no parking sign, there, I mean, if there is a no parking sign, the officers are still not required to come out and give them a citation if someone is there?
I'm saying that the officer has a discretion. Their, their job is to address the situation. So if they go there and people come out and they move their car, they talk to the people, they move their car, then they do not have to give them a citation. Again, as, as an officer who's worked patrol for many years, if I got a call and I went there and I gave people a warning, asked them to move their cars, you know, I may not cite it the first time, but if I keep getting called back and the same cars are not moving when they're saying they are, then of course I'm gonna cite them because they're, they're lying to me. So, but yeah, it's just important for people to understand that the officer is not required to give a parking citation in order to address the complaint. His job is to address the complaint, either to talk to people, have them move it, or have it cited if necessary.
So it's only to address the complaint, not when they're passing by, and they clearly see that the cars are in the no parking, but instead they look the other way and keep on driving?
Well, again, I, I can't, I can't say why the officer, why the officer may be headed to something else. You know, to be honest, a parking complaint is a very low priority for the most part. If the officer is driving by and, and he's going to another call, he's not gonna stop and take care of every parking complaint before he gets to the call that he's being called to. Again, we'll, we'll let the Watch Commanders know that there's an issue and a complaint about the parking. We'll have to take a look at it. But I cannot speak to every officer that drives by, whether they're looking there or not.
I can speak to that, because they don't look there. Another thing is, yesterday, I witnessed an officer parked on the dirt side with a car that was in the no parking zone, literally just watching the waves, instead of looking directly across the wall. Didn't do anything about it. Once they were done getting their fix of looking at the waves, they left. So are we there?
Again, again, the officer may be there to, the officer may be there to try to deter crime from people breaking into the car. And if there's no parking, the officer's not gonna not park somewhere if he feels that there's an issue. Again, I'm not that officer, I can't tell you why he was there or what he was doing. And as much as I respect your opinion, I'm pretty sure you don't know what the officer was doing when they drove by. But again, like I said, we'll let the-
They're parking. And I have a picture and a video of them just hanging out parking.
Okay, I, I, like I said, I wasn't that officer. I don't know why he was there. If he was there to observe something else or to watch something else, I don't know. I can't say. But like I said, I'll let the Watch Commanders know that there's an issue of the parking and everything else over there. You know, again, I'm not sure about the parking signs, if there, if there's no parking signs there at all. If there are, they'll tell, address those. If there's not, you know, again, it's up to the community to kind of be aware of the hazards and stuff like that, and as Patty had mentioned, if there's an issue. I'm sorry?
The hazard is that they are parking in the no parking zone and nothing is being done about it. The second thing is Officer Yamashita, I'm pretty sure he's a sergeant. He is the only officer that actually does his job. So we recommend him for doing his job. I asked them, why doesn't the other officers do the same? He said he can't tell them, but I mean, when you chose to uphold the law, right? When you became a police officer and you chose to uphold the law, isn't that the first step?
Is what, the first step? Is what, the first step?
Then get thousand something calls.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, you can call 911, and we'll, we'll address the situation.
Thank you. Real quick, I think, I think Roland, that we, we want to be able to hear solutions. You know, when you talk about that, you know, you call the officers and this is not priority. So the solution is, if the Board made a motion and they have the parks closed from 10 to 5, and there's illegal activity or illegal camping, I mean, you, you have the sign says illegal camping from 10 to 5, the parks are closed. So does that mean that HPD will not find that as a priority to go out? This situation, if they have signs of no parking or paint that area, the city agrees with Department of Hawaiian Homelands, is to have that no parking area on one side. That will be a cause where HPD can now come out and enforce. And so we want to hear a solution from you. Lani Kai Beach Park, no problem. Those residents, they are, they are very strong in saying no parking in certain areas. Driveways are being blocked at these homes at the Subland area. So we want to hear a great solution from you, HPD, and be able to resolve this before anything else does happen from our emergency resources that travel in and out of that area. Thank you so much, Board.
Great, very good, thank you. I will defer this to the Parks and Recs Committee, and then we can continue to have this conversation going. But just for clarity, Roland, so if the police are called and they're not issuing any citations, the resident can therefore call a supervisor and have them come back out again? I mean, I just want to be able for our residents to go back home tonight with some sort of movement going forward.
Hey Roland, let, let me jump in, let me jump in. So I think what Roland is saying is that it's kind of hard for us to determine what the officers are doing after the fact. You know, like, like if they're going to a call, if they're parked somewhere, they could be doing reports. They could be typing up some tags, and they're just parked there just as a deterrent. And they're not there for parking enforcement, but they could be parked somewhere like the resident was saying. If they're driving by, you know, I couldn't tell you what they're driving to and from or where they're going, if they're transporting a body, if they're going to another call, or they're coming back from another call, if they gotta go to the station. But I think what's, what with Corporal Pagan was saying is that, you know, if, if they call 911 and, you know, if the officer asks them to move, they don't move, or if it's a chronic thing, then they can call back and say the cars have not moved. We, we want the situation addressed, because it's easier to deal with it at that time when it's occurring. And if they feel like a particular officer isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing, then have a supervisor come, and they can, they can take a look at the situation. Because, you know, like, we're not there right now, right? Like, I'm not looking at that road at the time that the call is coming in. So we can have a supervisor come out and, you know, make sure the complaint is satisfied, yeah? Make sure that whatever the situation is, is remedied properly. And then, like what Corporal Pagan was saying, we can bring it up with the Watches. We can have them put this on one of their maybe monthly projects or something to address the, address the parking issues on that road. The other thing you gotta keep in mind though, and this is where Corporal Pagan was talking about compliance and stuff. If you've got a lot of cars on that road, like, let's say there's 20, 30 cars. I mean, sometimes, yeah, we tag the entire street, including the people calling. You know what I mean? Because, and, and I can, I can attest, I've had my CPT do that, where somebody called in for, for one car, and Corporal Pagan actually went down there, tagged that car, and then a resident comes out and goes, hey, that's my car, how come you tagging it? Well, you know, we got a complaint. And then, and then they go, well, what about that car over there? What about that car? What about that boat? And so Corporal Pagan went down the whole street and tagged the whole street. But, you know, like, you're kind of, you're, you're sort of, you know, I'm not saying waging war, but you're gonna make a lot of people upset. So sometimes you gotta ride that fine line between compliance and trying to satisfy the complaints. And then also, if it's tags that would require a tow, we only have limited tow trucks out here. You know, so if there's 20 cars that gotta get towed, you can imagine sort of the, the, the community or the backlash from that. So sometimes we do try and get compliance because of the situation. You know, especially if you have a large volume of violations. But there are other times, especially chronic, chronic issues where the neighborhood is experiencing chronic problems, that they just have to address it. And so I think that's just what they're gonna have to look at. I don't know if that answers the question, but we'll, we'll bring it up.
Thank you, no, that was very informative. Thank you, Lieutenant. Board Member Tector wants to weigh in on.
Oh, oh. Hi.
Is this a new, a new concern? Oh, hold on, did you want to wrap up on this topic, so we can just close it up?
I would like to invite you to our Parks and Rec, and there are results that can be done. We have to submit more letters, current letters, and work with the police as well as the community. And yeah, if they can stop the people from vending, they can do many more. So we have to, you know, make sure that we get a solution as Ms. Teruya has said in what you're requesting. Yes, we will get it. So please attend my next meeting, next month, the 2nd Wednesday.
Yeah, very good, thank you. And before HPD, we move on to our next community concern, I also want to extend that invitation to you as well, if you could have somebody come to the committee meeting, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. We all understand what's going on, so we can move forward effectively. But thank you very much, Lieutenant. I'll go ahead, please state your name.
Blessings start off with this. I just wanted to address the issues. With HPD, I understand where you're coming from with the community. Yes, work with the Neighborhood Board to get that issues out and everything. But I'd like to flag that this is a disability, a safety hazard amongst in the community in that area. So if you guys can gear towards that and go to the OH and put a complaint there, and also with City and County as well, because I do hear HPD what their reasons for not flagging or ticketing or whatnot. And there's strap, but the higher issue on this is the safety and the community there. And that's what's not being addressed with all the excuses and what's, not excuses, but all the reasons they may have. So with that going forward, you guys working with the Neighborhood Board, they set up whatever progress or procedures and whatnot, and you also work with the Disability Department with the United States, and, and you know, and then it'll work alongside with HPD.
Okay, very good.
Samantha, if I could just real quick, I just wanted to say that, you know, to be honest, I just wanted to let people know that the fastest and easiest thing for an officer to do is to issue a citation. It's a lot easier for me to drive by, cite the vehicle, park, drop the citation, and leave. When the officers take the time to try to let people know about the parking violation and, and what's happening, it is an attempt to try to get the community buy-in as well as to bridge relationships through, and speak to them and let them know why we're there. So it's not to say that the officers are lazy, because trust me, it's a lot easier for me to write a citation than to try to find a car owner and then let them know and wait for them to move their vehicle.
Thank you, Cora. It's not just the issue of citation or having you guys there as well, but also addressing actually the problem, which is the problem is the safety and the community in there. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Community, any other questions for HPD? Seeing none in the room and none online. Corporal Pagan, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Lieutenant Marino and Sergeant Fumi, we appreciate you. Please be safe out there tonight.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We are now in Resident Community Concerns. So community, if you do have any concerns in the room, we'll take, in the room first. Please line up to the microphone, and we'll go ahead and. Board Member Myers, did you have a community concern, or you wanted to weigh in on the previous?
No, I have a community concern.
Okay, we'll get to you if we don't see, I don't see anybody in the room? Nobody, okay. Please go to the microphone if you have community concerns. Otherwise, we're going to move on to virtual and then move on to the next agenda item. Okay, please state your name for the minutes, please.
My name, oh, is it me or? So I just saw on West Side Traffic Alert that, um, HDOT is doing speed bumps on Thursday and Friday on Pohakunui, or is it just signage? Oh, but so my concern is that, um, so if this is involving contraflow for the speed bumps, it shouldn't start on Pohakunui because the drivers already have to slow down because it's contraflow. What they're going to do is whip it through La Mania, Kialana Ave, no access road, and Pili Okahi, just to beat the like. So that's already been happening because they don't want to stay on Pohakunui. So to do the speed bumps on Pohakunui is not, that's not priority. If the speed bumps are going into that block here, their priority would be to do it from La Mania all the way up.
Okay, Representative Keela, would you mind weighing in on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair Decort. Hello, everybody. Representative Keela. To, to Cavana's part, starting Thursday, the folks in Zabulans have been, in all honesty, those hundred households bear the burden of accessibility of the contraflow for the entire Hawaiian coast. And so they've been dealing with this issue predating my time in office. But what I really appreciate with the relationship that we have with DOT is that they are stepping up where DHL and the county just can't. So, starting Thursday, yes, they are going to be installing the signage to start. And in the first implementation of the project, they'll be laying speed tables all along that front road for directly those houses there. And I, I don't, I do think that there was actually the full plan to go through the entire neighborhood. Because, yeah. So I, I can't, the, it's starting on Thursday, Friday, but I will make sure to get an update to see what the timeline is for the remaining neighborhood. But I just want to thank DOT for that because the Vena folks have been saying for the longest time, this is what they're going through. DOT has graciously stepped up to do this for us. So thank you.
Yes, and we appreciate DOT with being, um, taking action on that. Very good. So I believe that, uh, Cavan, Cavana, uh, will continue to stay in touch with us on the progress to make sure that those speed bumps wrap around. But okay, go ahead. Say your name, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shelby Burner, Pikachu, Justice Mike. I'm not as tall as Mr. Darius Keela. So I want to give you guys a feedback. Guys didn't come to the military lease. We had Commander Steven. His last name starts with an M, is like McGillicuddy, like something like that. I totally cannot enunciate it. Yeah, so we had a hundred fifty-four people in Wainai say no. So Uncle Kalko, who said, how many people want to extend the military leases? Everyone raised their hand and said no, which is a great thing to represent the West Side. So my kai to all of you if you weren't there. Uh, and the good thing is, uh, because I did try to work this behind the scenes. I mentioned this before on the Nanakuli Board and the Wainai Board to try to do some positive PR to get the Army Military, because they always said that they're going to help us to do some cleanup or some volunteerism. The last time I was here, they said ninety days. So when I asked for them, they said, can I be in August? Because they were doing training in Schofield, because they're preparing for WAR. But we're looking at September, the third week of September, because we can't do anything September eleventh, that's Iniki, that's, uh, New York and everything. But, um, because we don't have, uh, according to the agenda, Lieutenant Colonel Jason Capps here. We have our E nine here from the Army and we just talked story right now that that's what we're looking for. We have to go up the chain of command. But we love to combine Nanakuli, Wainai Board and all the people to do a cleanup using everyone's sustainable coastlines, everyone's nonprofits. I am in the lion's clubs. We can host it with liability insurance to make sure, because they told me they need the five Ws, who, what, when, where, why, how. But, uh, Pikachu only knows how to adopt the highway. I cannot do this project alone. So I definitely love the support of everyone because then I would love the city and county to help pick up the Opala, make sure the stuff goes into the dump. But we know we got tires, we got refrigerators, you know, we got other things. So we definitely love some support and we love the military to help us out because, uh, the commander got hammered. Uh, if you guys weren't there, by all the neighborhood boards and the meetings about the military leases. So we have some good news. So hopefully we can do some, some things together. And it's not just a cleanup, but always hopefully, hopefully we can do a barbecue together and we can talk story. We know we've got La Hoi Hoi coming up. If you know this, at the end of the month, we're doing something in Wainai on July twenty-seventh, and we have the other one on twenty-eighth right there in Thomas Square. So you're all invited if no one lets you know. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Uh, right on time. Thank you very much. Okay, please state your name for the minutes. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Patty Teria, I wanted to bring up something, um, because I attended the commission meetings for two days and you have about six or seven homesteaders, beneficiaries, lesses here on your board, which is just wonderful. And maybe this, this item will can be deferred in housing. It's really important or on your agenda. This is regarding the Poor Avenue, the proposal from DHL to have a Kahale tiny homes for homeless in Poor Avenue on one of the residential areas, which is an abandoned house. So, you know, it's really crucial, um, Poor Avenue residents oppose this proposal. It is such a ridiculous proposal. You know the Hawaiian Homestead Act. DHL trust lands are for beneficiaries, for lesses. And, and that's under the Act. It's not for program or from homeless. If you're going to bring homeless in, they should be on the waitlist of fifty percent. So we need to talk about it. We need to clip it or else it will happen. So they're looking at abandoned homes within the, on DHL trust lands to propose the governor's initiative. And I know the governor's rep is here, Gary and I. Please take this message in and I, you know, for Poor Avenue, we did speak at the, uh, Hawaiian Homes, uh, Commission Meeting today that they don't support that. They don't support that Kahale homeless tiny homes to come in on their residential area, which is Auntie Maxine's house. Whoever knows Poor Avenue, that old, that house that she has here. It should be demolished. It should go into the inventory and it should be for the waitlisters. So I hope the board really take a look at if you have a housing committee or the board take a position. I know that the Ohana from Poor Avenue will, will come out and speak. But we did take the first step to go to the commission meetings to bring the, um, importance of that. We don't support that there. And they're also talking about Wainai, so Wainai Valley too. So, you know, we need to, maka allah, I know where are these Kahale? We're not against homeless shelters. We are not against our, um, homeless, uh, community out here. But they have to pick a particular area, not just put it in, um, trust land because trust lands are for our thirty thousand waitlisters. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. Um, I, I would actually encourage you to please stay until we're able to hear from Governor's Rep and then maybe we can weigh in more on that conversation. Please go ahead, state your name.
Hello, my name is Austin Salsedo. I'd like to echo the Patty Teria about the Kahale's. I don't care what name you give it, Kahale basically is transitional homes. Okay, this transitional homes is comprised of many type of entities. Jail diversion programs, circuit court, halfway houses, you name it. It's still a group living facility. And it's actually under a conditional use permits. And I'll bring it to the governor's rep and the mayor's rep tomorrow just to make awareness. There is a, uh, Kupuna Council meeting, I think at ten o'clock, I was being advised. And it's to talk about Kahale's and the representatives to discuss and given the presentation to the Wainai Kupuna Council tomorrow at Poka Bay is, uh, he used to be Representative John Mizuno. Now he's a state House Representative. That's why I need to bring this up. So with that said, it's imperative that all these, uh, issues not only go before the Wainai Kupuna Council, but come before the neighborhood board in the nine six seven nine two because of the DP City DPP conditional use permit major. Because in there, there is attribute for the neighborhood board to engage for community impact study. Okay? It's very imperative that, and awareness on this. If we, the neighborhood board doesn't engage in this, they'll be forfeiting their rights to give input for neighborhood, the whole community discussion, impact study. That's what it's all about. And the neighborhood boards in the nine six seven nine two needs to put something in writing on the stands whether they're going to accept or deny acceptance of all this group living facilities. I don't care where it is, treatment centers and such. So making awareness of all this, this is an echo of what Patty Teria said. She opposed it. I understand it because there's no measurement of how many group living facilities on this nine six seven nine two. Representative Bob McDermott, because we have poor leadership on the nine six seven nine two on the state level. I brought it to his attention. He represents Ever Beach. He wrote a letter, a memo to, uh, Governor, uh, David Iggy. That's when he was in, in his realm time. Of how many of this type of group living, uh, halfway houses on the nine six seven nine two in comparison? Because we need a measurement of how much there are, the numbers. No response. My, uh, our representative state House and Senate for District forty-five and District twenty-two Senate was on the same email transmitter. Nothing was conveyed or actually continued on Governor, uh, Josh Green's realm. So, uh, with that said, making awareness to this neighborhood board. Keep an eye on that. Need a representative at the Kupuna Council's meeting at ten o'clock at Poka Bay to hear the presentation by, uh, now Houseless, State House Representative for the Houseless, John Mizuno. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Um, I will defer this to our housing committee. Uh, and then we'll stay on top of this. It is definitely a issue that we need to address and possibly even, uh, call a special meeting on. But, um, but thank you for bringing that up. I encourage the both of you to please stay until we're able to hear from Governor's Rep and also Mayor's Rep as well. Please go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Kalais Salsedo. I just wanted to, um, to denoteation out there. For some reason, on a government side, there's miscommunication. Okay, the miscommunication is for some reason they thought the Wainai Kupuna Council was the voice for the whole nine six seven nine two. Outwardly, they're not. They're a result. So that's one of the things I need to let you folks know. Because when we asked them to come to the Nanakuli Board and the Wainai Board, the answer was, we don't need, we're above that. What makes you think you're Kukai don't know the same? So we have to get that clarification on the state and the city because not only us, community, we don't have to communicate. Upper management needs to. Because if they're going to allow one person to speak all for the nine six seven nine two, that's unethical behavior. You have to listen to all. We have a neighborhood board, Nanakuli and Wainai for a reason. That council is not the voice for all nine six seven nine two. So I just wanted to bring that awareness because I will not tolerate government bullying, allowing them to do that. That's a government bullying, bullying, it's allowing them to do that. Not on my book. Not in our community. Because we need to be our own voice. You folks, the board and Wainai Board is the voice for the community. Not a government official that was made up by a result. That's all I have to say. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. I do believe though that, um, a conditional use permit is in order for them to be able to proceed. So they would need to come to the neighborhood board. So we'll hear from, uh, from Mayor's and Governor's Rep very, very shortly. Thank you. Go ahead.
Aloha. Blessings Star Dalakus, again. Diplomatic Minister Kohava Ipaina. I'm just here to kind of remind the neighborhood board that you guys are the speakers for the community and not the Kupuna Council meeting. I love the Kupunas and they are very strong in their words. But like what sis said over there. You guys are the ones that is, will be speaking up for the communities. So I'm backing you guys up to let you guys know. As for the governor and the mayor rep, my name is Blessings. I'm diplomatic minister. Please hence and hear the people saying, do not use those lands that belongs to the Hawaiians who are on waitlist. Put our houseless people, not homeless, because this is their home. They're houseless people where they belong, where they will feel comfortable. Provide what they lack is mental health, medical support. And if you can't support them, then support the family that is with them, that is trying to support them in being houseless. Because it comes to the cultural, the understanding and the history of being oppressed, depressed and everything else that comes in, in within this community. This whole island, this whole Aina. And that's my message to the governor and the mayor. And yes, hi, I'm Blessings.
Okay, very good. Um, okay, so, uh, online, uh, Board Member Myers.
Can I go ahead and know what they said first?
Oh, please. Go ahead.
Mahalo.
I, I apologize, Board Member Myers. Please forgive me. Uh, go ahead, Board Member Tector.
Uh, just to reiterate, why, uh, Nanakuli separated from Wainai? It's because it's too huge of, um, concerns from our nine six seven nine two. And we're sharing the responsibility and I appreciate what, um, Salsedo have said and Blessings because unless we hear it from the community, only then can we respond. But, uh, you have to go through both boards and that is truly correct. And even I agree, they're not my voice. Because unless, as you guys share, then we can move forward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Board Member Myers, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. My community concern is related to Pa'akea. And specifically last week's news report regarding Pa'akea, emergency access road between Hakima Road and Lululele Naval. The Pa'akea going to be opened up next spring, twenty-four hours. I want to make it public, uh, and set the record straight that our neighborhood board, since I've been on it since twenty seventeen, our neighborhood board had worked with Senator Miley and every one of our representatives from our district. As all of you know, between Hakima and Lululele is part of our districts. Currently, Representative Keela is our representative for Pa'akea between Hakima and Lululele Naval. It is not Cedric Gates. I was concerned that he shared with, and made the statement that he's been involved. No. Our representative started with Tupula and then with Eli, and then currently it's Keela along with Senator Miley. And it started off with Councilmember, uh, Kimberly Pine. And then it went to Councilmember Andrea Tupula, who was our previous representative for our district. So my concern is that the governor has made it very clear. He did not, um, he's going to wait to after the primary to determine which person to put into Senator Miley's seat. And so everyone should be getting their ballots on Saturday or anyway. So my concern is that when he makes statements, Rep, Representative Gates, not Senator Gates. When Representative Gates is making statements to the news reporter ahead of Rep Keela and seeing that he's been working on it for the last eight years, that is false narrative and false information to our community. He knows that he's not part of our district. And I had never heard any of our representatives, Tupula, when she was in office, Eli, when she was in office, and now Keela. I've never made them any, I never heard them make any statements saying that they were involved with making sure that Wainai, uh, representative district for Wainai, that they were in control and managing all of that and were involved on the table. As many of you know, the minister show it. Rep Gates have never come to our neighborhood board meetings. And you can go all the way back to twenty seventeen sporadically, here and there, but not consistent. And maybe in the beginning, I saw him twenty seventeen here and there, twenty eighteen, but then went off the radar. So I just wanted to make it clear to the community that I know this is an election year, but, and the primary is coming up. But do not allow anyone to give you false information about a project regard, that Senator Miley and our other representatives had actually vetted out, and especially with our neighborhood. And especially with our neighborhood board, I took offense that our neighborhood board had worked hard in bringing it up over and over and over and asking over and over about funding, going to the Ompo. Thank you, Tonka Richard Lanford, Ompo, and other Ompo reps. I was one at one time. And we brought it up at the Ompo meetings about how we needed that to be, we needed funding for that. And before the funding happens, you have to have an environmental study and et cetera, et cetera. He was never involved in that. So I just wanted to set the record straight for the community. And I also wanted to mahalo all the community concerns that was brought up before me. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Board Member Myers. We're going to take one more community concern and then we're going to move on. Go ahead, state your name, please.
Aloha, Kalae. I want this message to go to the governor. You know what? Just that happened, it's been going on for years. Mr. Gates has been taking credit. He took credit for the Ka'au Beach Park in Makaha. And we had collaborated with a councilwoman, Andrea Tupula. He's been taking credit for a lot of things. And I want this message to go to the governor. If he called Yni District Forty Five his district, he called the people he's constituent. That's BS. He never comes to the border till I call him out. Enough is enough. Mr. Governor, do not elect him because he has never been good for our Yni community. And I know this Nanakuli Board is being with the naval. They've been fighting for this because of so much things being happening. But if you're going to put someone in a seat that wants to take credit, I even had Kupunas calling him out because they know the true story. I'm asking the governor to make you a good choice and a right choice. Do not put that people, do not put that person in office that is very deceiving to his own community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Salsedo. Okay, we're moving on to presentations. So we have with us the Nanakuli High and Intermediate School. They are going to be presenting their homecoming parade that's going to be happening October fourth, twenty twenty four, four P M to six P M. Please all state your name and your grades. Thank you very much for being with us. We are working with Mr. Kitsu in helping to support the homecoming parade. So go ahead.
Aloha, Maikako. My name is Cory.
I'm Ali.
My name is Vivini Okapa.
We are, we are in the student government of Nanakuli High and Intermediate School and we also have announcements. We will also be taking pictures for attendance purposes by lovely. The Nanakuli High and Intermediate School Homecoming Parade will be held on Friday, October fourth, from four to five P M. We will begin the parade on the first road and then go up Nanakuli after the school. Please be aware that there will be some traffic during this time. The Homecoming Game is against Ka'aua High School on Saturday, October fifth. The theme for this year's Homecoming is Hawks Beach Bash. We hope everyone can support the parade and the game. Are there any questions?
Okay, very good. Hawks Beach Bash, that's the theme. Okay. Awesome. We'll open it up for question. Board members, any questions for Nanakuli? Okay. I think, oh, go ahead, Board Member.
So wasn't, wasn't last year, didn't we as a board walk the route? So are we planning on doing that again? Are we going to have discussion on during our board business? Or do we relegate that to board business or for our month, next month's agenda to add it to the board business? Because I know that was something that we did last, last time. So I just wanted, wasn't sure if that was going to happen again or not.
We can put it on the agenda for next month.
For next month as a board business?
We, go ahead, yeah.
Because we did walk it. I think that's good that we are.
Yes, and it was quite a walk.
It was a good walk. It was hot cake. It was good.
Uphill. Yes. Okay, go ahead, Board Member Agustin.
Thank you. Thank you so much, girls, for coming in and sharing. So for your previous years, you guys did floats and things like that. How can the community get involved to support each of your classes? Are there materials and things that the community could donate and who do we work with to get involved?
So for each class or like for each person that wins homecoming, each class, you can get donations to the advisor of that class. Like for instance, for us, class of twenty twenty six, we had a lot of donations from different people from Nanakuli, of course, and which helped a lot with the floats and banner making specifically. You can also, if you want to, you can also talk to the parents of the people that are that want homecoming. And you can also ask them if they also need help with like setting up things and financial stuff like money.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions? If not, we'll go to a community. Community, any questions for Nanakuli High and Intermediate? Go ahead, to the microphone, please. Please state your name for the minutes.
Aloha, Nanakuli High School. And I thank you, board members. I never did this when I went to high school. So from the community who's never been, you know, out of Yni, is there going to be food? Like, how do, how do people come out to support? Like, I know you have a homecoming parade and like, is there a food booth? Is there drinks? Like, how, how do we help sell your event so the community can come out and not just worry about traffic?
Well, the avenue is normally shut off, but you can go to the top of the avenue or along the avenue and there will be candy. As for food, there will be food at the football events if you want to come. That's for the programs to decide. We're just student government.
I highly suggest robotics because robotics is mainly the one that does their fundraising. And yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, seeing no other questions, none online. We thank you very much for being with us. Please give our aloha to Mr. Kitsu. And thank you very much for all your, all of your hard work. Awesome. Very good. Well, we are very happy that Ha'ima has accepted our invitation to update us on the sirens. We've got some inoperable sirens along the coastline. So Administrator James Barros, he has a very full schedule, so he's needed in many places. Please continue to keep the island of Kauai in prayer as they are going through this brushfire season as well. But Kai Eli, the floor is yours. You can go ahead and take it away. Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Yes, aloha and good evening. I'm Kiela Amundson, Communications Director with the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. And I have the privilege this evening to report on your sirens. So the siren located at Nanakuli Beach Park and Nanaikapono Elementary, which is tagged as Siren OA three one six. And then Ma'ili sirens further up north up the coast, which consists of three sirens, OA three one eight and OA three one eight A as well as OA three one nine. The Kahip point siren near the Hiko Kahip Point Power Plant. And further south, also tagged as OA three one five. All these mentioned are all operational. Now, the speaker, excuse me, the siren located in Nanakuli identified as OA three one seven is currently inoperable. We recognize that this siren does play a crucial role in our emergency alert system. And functioning is essential for the safety and well-being of all residents in this particular area. Unfortunately, this siren speaker drivers and top mount solar panel does require replacement in order for it to be restored to full functionality. Again, we understand the critical importance of this siren to your community and have referred the necessary repair work to the Department of Accounting and General Services as it is beyond Ha'ima's capabilities and will need contracted work to get it replaced. We will keep you updated on the progress of the repairs and provide a timeline for completion as soon as we receive more information from DAGs. We anticipate early twenty twenty five for repair work to begin. In the meantime, we continue to encourage all residents to stay informed through alternative emergency alert systems, including mobile alerts and local media to ensure that you receive timely information in case of an emergency. Of course, any emergency updates will also be posted on all Ha'ima's social media platforms, which I will be happy to insert in the chat box. Pending any questions, that is the end of Ha'ima's report this evening.
Okay, very good. You wouldn't happen to have any kind of display on where those sirens are located? I don't think our community is familiar with the siren numbers.
Okay, so yes, you can view the all sirens on the public siren dashboard that is accessible through our Ha'ima website at ready.hawai.gov. And I can also place that link in the chat box.
Okay, well, just for the community that is here, I do have that website open. So the three sirens that she is referring to, first is that Uliava right across from Princess Kahenu. And then also Mount Lahilahe, that's siren over there, and then also Anna Point. So yeah, so I, I think maybe visuals next time would be helpful. So this way our community kind of knows where, where it's going to be.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then Jeffrey is going to be, so community that is online with us, Jeffrey is going to be putting that link into the chat as well, just so that we can have a visual so we know what siren she's talking about. But we'll go ahead and go over to questions. Board Member Corona?
Yes, I have a question. You had mentioned that the repairs to, and I guess it's the one, where was it at? The OA three one seven, that was the one across Princess Kahenu? Yeah, that was the one from, yeah. So when you, you made the comment that it's outside or the repairs are, are outside your department's capability. So and then you have to go back to Department of Accounting to work to get that corrected. So the way I interpret that is that in your, in your fiscal year budget, you have a break fix or a repair budget that should be factored in there. So if you're not using repair money for there to contract the workout, it sounds like you have to go to the Department of Accounting to ask for money to be able to go out to get the contract to fix it. So can you just elaborate a little bit? Is it because you don't have the dollar amount in your budget to, to go out for the contract? Or do you have to request new money to go and get the contract?
Yeah, I am not certain of the budget for this particular department. It's out of my purview, but I can certainly take that question, which is a good question, back to our logs team and pose it so that they can articulate better or an answer for you.
Okay, so I see our, our governor's representative, he's taken that down. And the reason why I'm asking is because this is the same cycle that we ran into with the Ma'ili siren that was down for for a couple, two or three years. And that was kind of the same response that we were getting from before is, I'm not going to beat the messenger here. But the response was, we're waiting for parts or we have to get funding for this. We need a new truck to be able to do a man lift, to get up there to fix, which is extended, extended, extended. So, so it's more, more, I guess definitive type response would be better. So the community is aware of how that process is going to work as far as is it within their budget that they should have the capability to go out and, and contract themselves versus having to get more money from the Department of Accounting to be able to continue that on. So I'll just look forward to the response for next month. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board Member Agustin?
Hi. Thank you for sharing, Kiela. I wanted to ask, why does it take six months for this type of repair to occur? Is it the processing of paperwork?
So, I mean, that could be part of the problem. Currently, Ha'ima has three full-time siren technicians servicing four hundred and twelve sirens statewide. So these siren techs, the siren techs that we have on our team can replace batteries or change out modems. But all other major repairs, again, need to be contracted and go through DAGs. And the procurement process, as we all know, can take quite a bit of time.
Okay. All right, Board Member Corona?
I'm sorry, and I just want to segue on that. And this is more for the governor's rep as well. So to me, and, and again, I'm not killing the mess, I'm not beating down the messenger here. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, that it sounds like in, in my project management experience and when I'm developing a program, one of the things I'm going to do is I'm going to have a maintenance program. In that maintenance, I'm funding for break fix. And if I'm not, if I am, if I have qualified technicians to do basic repairs, I also have a contract out there for major break fix. So I would expect that in the, the maintenance cycle and longevity of a program, I'm funding, I'm budgeting for that. And that's what I'm requesting for in my budget going forward. So again, it just goes back to, you know, it's the timeline, the six months, the plus on there. So just something to consider for Ha'ima or maybe the government as a, or the state as they look forward that I would expect that the complexity of this, four hundred plus sirens with only basic break fix options available, then it sounds to me they have to build into a, a higher level maintenance contract in there, which is fed annually. So we don't have to have these longevity of it outages for public safety. So that's all my final comment. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We do have our board member online that has a question. Board Member Myers, if you can unmute yourself.
Mahalo Chair. My concern with your suggestion for the Princess Kahenu, which is a native Hawaiian homelands with over, over two hundred homestead lots. My concern with you saying go to secondary emergency, like the mobile or the radio, that's an assumption that everybody is, they're up, they're, they're awake. But when they are sleeping, they are in their beds and they are totally sleeping. And a crisis happens at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, when everybody is totally sleeping. They don't have their radios on and they don't have their mobiles. They expect to hear the sirens. And that's the situation that happened with Lahaina is that there was so many, because they didn't hear the sirens, Kupunas didn't realize that, you know, there was an emergency. And so we have Kupunas that are just in there. They don't, maybe they don't even have internet. They don't have, my, my moms don't have a mobile phone. And so you're assuming that these things are accessible. You're assuming that the electricity is on and that they can access it. And so I'm concerned that our community has to wait six months. And I agree with what David has stated. Yes, you have only three members, three workers, and you have these many sirens. But I don't think every month one is going out. And that I would assume that there would be parts because the sirens basically consist of the same thing. So I'm just kind of concerned that it's not like you're going to buy a vehicle. You're going to buy the stuff that's included with the siren. So I'm just surprised that we have to wait this long. And I'm concerned that my Kupuna in that area are going not to hear the siren at midnight while others do because we were given a presentation by your, their predecessor or the person with Ha'ima that I can't remember his name. And he was saying they're staggered within so many feet, feet from each other. And that when one is down, there's not overlap for some places. And so I just wanted to bring that concern to you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Kai Eli, do you have any? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to community comments. Go ahead, please state your name for the minutes.
Aloha Chair and our community neighborhood board members. My name is Valerie Manoa. I live on Nanakuli Homestead. I'm trying to like not explode right now with what I just heard. So I'm trying to keep it good. I am a teacher out in the community, so. But my question is, are there not schedules for maintenance? Like if I think about our own homes, right? We're constantly We're constantly upkeeping our homes. I hope so, right? We all upkeep our homes. With all of our government entities, you are, your kulianna is to upkeep our homes, which is the larger spaces that we live in, and that we have put all of you in your place, in your positions to take care of us, right? So why is there not a schedule of maintenance to be reviewing all of these apparatuses? It reminds me of when the zipper broke down, and we had to wait several months because we didn't have either the supplies or the no with all to fix that. But why is it that we do not have that? I mean, to me, that's not acceptable. This is an emergency situation. We are all aware of being emergency-prepared in our own individual homes. And again, the larger home is all of you taking care of us. Yeah. But it's not acceptable. And if you, I'm sorry to tell you what to do, I'm a teacher, but if you know you're going to be coming to present, you should come with all the other people to answer all the other questions. Or you should have done your homework to be aware of the questions that are going to be asked of you ahead of time. If it is that something's not working, then you should have had someone here about, here to answer the maintenance, to answer the budget. To wait, I'm going to ask you, what if you lived in Princess Kahani, or your grandchild lives there? Now are we going to say, let's not have any emergency for the next six months? Okay, let's just not. But I agree, how many people are going to be on their devices? And will it be a true alert? You know, I'm just sorry, but it's not acceptable. You know, my family, my life, my community. You need to take that into your hand and rethink about your department and how much you actually care for the people of Hawaii. I'm on my soapbox right now. We are in Hawaii, and we are the main people here. And that's who you should be caring for, and not for outside vendors that you may be talking story with right now. But this should have been in the plan already. It's an emergency preparedness thing. This is not acceptable. I'm sorry. So my question was, where's the schedule? Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for that question. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board community. My name is Elizabeth Dixon. With OA 317, which I know because of my son, it has been broken for four years. So why is it going to take until next year to finally get it fixed? That is the only siren I hear from my house. I have a 78-year-old father who has Parkinson's and Alzheimer's dementia, and is now wheelchair-bound. So if I don't have proper warning, how am I supposed to get him to safety? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name.
Blessings. This is for the governor and the mayor in the state of Hawaii. This has been going for six months. Mayor, Governor, you guys got a month. Fix it.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. No other community comments or questions, none online? Board Member Tector?
I thank you for sharing what data you gave us. There are community addresses to you. Now, this facility that's here for the elderly, and me being experienced working in the hospital, when there's a fire alarm, we literally have seconds to carry how many workers to carry out all these patients. So without that warning, and we're in hurricane season, there is absolutely no time. You literally have to give them, give us 30-minute warning to get maybe 30 people out of that care home, let alone block the roads. So it is very key. And you hear the emergency, so we await your follow-up. Hopefully, it could be next month with some expedition as far as data. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. I will state that I have invited, oh, did you guys want to comment? Go ahead. Please go to the microphone.
Good evening, Chair. John Apuri Travis, a community member. And I also work in the field of public safety. So Kaila, I know you're just the messenger, you know, and I heard about Board Member Corona's scheduling, planning, maintenance, and all of that. But what are you guys going to do if there's an emergency, something like Lahaina, and you guys have fatalities? What are you guys going to tell the community then? Well, the siren didn't work for four years? Us as a community, we rely on those sirens, especially for the elderly. You folks are supposed to protect the lives that are in this community. With the equipment going down, community member says it's four years it's been broken. You're here to give us a presentation tonight, and you're going to tell us it's going to take another six months to a year to complete. Maui was just on fire last week. Kauai was on fire and is still on fire. This is the west side of the island of Oahu. When do you think we're going to light up? My question is, is for us in planning, especially when lives are involved, preparation is everything prior to execution. I feel that the city, or even at the state level, has failed in you folks' planning. We rely on you people. And everything always comes back to, why is our Lahaina's siren is always working, but ours aren't? The 96792 community is tired of being left behind. And that's probably why you folks are probably hearing so many complaints about it. Or they're out here expressing their concerns, is because we're really tired of it. And at one point in time, the mayor did tell us to take back our own communities. Believe it or not, a lot of us are still doing that. We're trying to work in our communities to take it back. But when it comes, regards to public safety and the lives of people, I think you folks need to plan a little better, especially like David said. When you have something like that, there's scheduling involved, scheduling maintenance. So you're going to tell me nobody came out here to check that siren for four years? No scheduled maintenance? Nothing? That's my concern. I mean, our lives depend on it. I just wanted to share that. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Kaila, thank you very much. I would like to note that I did initially reach out to Ha'ima in May to schedule a presentation. Now, the reason that it was triggered in May is because that's when Hiko was going to be rolling out their PSPS plan with shutting off the power if it gets too windy, and depending on the conditions, and so on and so forth. Everybody knows that YNI, the 96792, is the number-one most susceptible district on a potential wildfire. So I'm really going to have to strongly recommend that Administrator Burrows attends our meeting. Again, we'll have another presentation next month. Because it's very important that we give our community some answers, being that we're dealing with the lack of resources that we are already dealing with. So I'll go ahead and put it on the agenda. He was very effective. The last time he attended our neighborhood board meeting, he was able to get one of the sirens fixed. So we're hoping for positive results this time around. But if you can go ahead and please put the date down to have Administrator James Burrows attend our next meeting Tuesday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. Then I believe that he'll be able to bring us some concrete answers on what will be the active results of rectifying these three inoperable sirens. Do you think we can do that?
Absolutely. I will bring this to him. We do, Ha'ima recognizes that sirens are a major concern, especially when they're not working properly. We do take this issue very seriously. And there are many factors to consider when addressing such repairs. But again, thank you for your questions and concerns. I will take them back to Ha'ima. And we will hopefully be able to address them for your next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I will also work with the governor's rep to encourage Administrator Burrows to attend next month as well. But we appreciate you, Kaila. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you. Mahalo. Okay, moving on to officials' monthly reports, we have Governor's Rep Gary Yamashiroya. Hello.
Good evening. Before I get into all the other stuff that was brought up, I want to make sure that I present an opportunity for the community. Because, you know, you don't want to, you want to make sure that you participate in every program that's out there, especially if it benefits the community. So the Department of Agriculture wanted me to come to the neighborhood board and let you know that they're accepting applications for the micro grant for food security program. I don't know if you've heard about it. It's been really successful. It provides support for small-scale gardening, herding, and livestock operations. They have a total of $3,576,470 available for this year's program, which was provided by the federal government under the 2018 Farm Bill. So the program is open to individuals, including backyard farmers, for the amount set at $5,000 per applicant. Applicants must be a Hawaii resident, at least 18 years old, and head of the household. And those previously awarded grants are ineligible. Organizations registered to do business in Hawaii, including native Hawaiian nonprofits, fairly-funded educational facilities, the amount is set at $10,000 per applicant. And, but the organizations will have to provide 10% of the grant award in matching funds. So the online application form is on the Department of Agriculture Market Development Branch website. And the RFP, the Request for Proposals, is posted on the State Procurement Office website. Examples of the types of activities that can be funded under the grant include small-scale gardening, which is purchasing tools or equipment, soil, seeds, plants, canning equipment, refrigeration, hydroponic and aeroponic farming, small-scale herding and livestock operations, such as purchasing animals, buying, erecting, or repairing fencing for livestock. And then there's apiary, which is bees and bee boxes, education, and expanding food markets. So I think it's a great program. Like I said, it's been a huge success in the past. A lot of applicants, but I wanted to make sure you are aware of it, or anybody that would be interested in doing something like that in this, in Nanakuli. So I just wanted to let you know that Board Member Myers approached me after the meeting last month, and she expressed the concern about the Kahali on the DHL lands. So my job here is to ensure that the governor's office is aware of the issues that are important to the neighborhoods. So every month, after the neighborhood board meetings, I do a report. I don't work for the governor. I work for the Department of Taxation. Please don't throw anything at me. Although there was good news in the, there was good news in the newsletter about the Hawaii's historic tax breaks. So it's the largest tax break in state history. You could read about it in the newsletter. But I, but my job is to come here to hear what you have to say and report directly to the governor's office of what your concerns are. And that's what I did, especially about the Kahali on the DHL lands. I did also let DHL know. So they are aware of it. I will reiterate it in my report this month and really stress how much of a concern this is. So I will do that. I will. Regarding, and just to give you some background, I've been here, I'm not sure how long I have been coming. It's I think it's close to a year now coming to the board meeting. So I know that the sirens are a big issue. I believe though, and I'm not sure if it's the same siren, but my understanding is that it was under procurement, but I can verify that. I think I reported that at one of the prior meetings, but it may not be the same siren. That may have been another inoperative siren that was fixed. But I do understand what you're asking, Board Member Corona. I don't know what the procurement for DAGs is like, or what their budget is like, just like Kylie said. But I will try to find out that information for you for the next board meeting. And I will also express to, I will also reach out to Ha'ima to let them know that you would like Administrator Barrows at the next meeting. It, I mean, I have taken extensive notes, so I'll make sure that all these are conveyed in my report.
Great, great. We'll go ahead and move on to questions. Yep, very good. Board Member Corona?
Yes, Miss Gary. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you're doing here. I really do. And the thoroughness of the responses. I know it's difficult. You're the middle person when it comes to, you put out the request for information from the specific departments within the state departments, and we're relying on them to get back to you. So I know it's a challenge. Kind of seg, or kind of following on what Board Member Myers was talking about, the Kahali is type going, potentially being proposed on DHL lands. I'd also think that we need to have an additional explanation from probably the governor's office on the Kahali program. And the reason why I say that is because, not just on DHL, but there is an, I know there's an effort right now for a fairly large Kahali proposal behind Sac and Save here in Nanakuli. And it's still in the beginning stages, but I know that the developer is working with organizations to try to, even the state about, so I think what the point I'm trying to make is, how far does it go? How big is it going to get? You know, those types of things, I think the community really needs to be aware of the Kahali process and the intent behind it. Like Mr. Salzio had mentioned, you know, others, other terms that could be used for the term Kahali, and its usage within the community as the governor's emergency proclamations, as the governor is making his attempts to house where he can. But the thought process behind it and potential impacts to the expansions within the community and where they go within the communities, I think we're uninformed. And I really think that we need to be better informed. So we as a community, and even a neighborhood board, can make good, informed decisions, but only if we're informed. And that's how we succeed for the community. So is it possible that we can get more literature, more information from someone within the state that can expand a lot more on this, so we can help you and help the community out as these programs morph themselves within our community?
Yep, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Board members, any questions before we move on to community?
One more.
Oh, go ahead, Board Member Tector?
My question would be, even though the governor's office collaborate, coordinate, negotiate with DHL, we wish that the governor not touch DHL money and use that as, you know, I guess a ploy to utilize the funds that we need to use, I guess, within a year. So you take that back to the governor. My question to you would be, as a representative, do you like your job?
Do I like my job?
Do you like being the governor's representative?
Correct.
Actually, I do. I do like my job.
Correct. So with that, the Kahali project taxation, if it's not coming out of our tax dollars, the governor has no right even making any proposals. None whatsoever, and trying to persuade DHL otherwise. And our director should know not to touch that and, you know, make it a transitional project. Get the waitlisters off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up to community.
Thank you, Gary, for the update on the Kahali. And then I know Kuma will explain what Kahali means to all of us, but it's important to know that any, any kind of project like that on DHL trust lands is mandated by beneficiary consultation. And that is very important. You need to have a beneficiary consultation when you have projects moving on trust land. I kind of urge the board, maybe you should invite the homeless director, John Mizuno, and Sam Moku to come in and update the board, where these Kahali homes are going to be, not only on trust land, but also as David mentioned, behind Sac and but also, as David mentioned, behind Sack and Save and other projects that's going to come up. But beneficiary consultation is really important, especially when you deal with Hawaiian homelands projects. So thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Aloha, Kumua, sorry, Valerie Manoa. My question to Governor is, what is his definition of Kahali? What is the definition of Kahali? Because I don't think we understand what that means in Hawaiian terms. Kahali doesn't mean you have your own house on property. You have, it's houses that, it's buildings that do different things. So I don't know if, sorry, if they're using Hawaiian terms so that we feel good that a Hawaiian word is being used. But I'm just going to read what's here. Kahali means, yeah, that it translates to groups of houses comprising a Hawaiian home, formerly consisting of a men's eating house, a women's eating house, a sleeping house, a cooking house, a canoe house. There's separate buildings to do different things in. So is that what the intent is? Or is it to build small houses for people to live in? Because if it is small houses for people to live in, then I would ask that we not call it Kahali because that "ole pono" that's not proper in Hawaiian language. We shouldn't be using Hawaiian words to, for our own benefit, to make other people want to be on our side for our project. So I'm, I'm just asking. And I don't know, but I'm, it's just not a, not a pono thing, especially on Hawaiian homeland. Yeah. So the purpose of certain things, that's what should be used on that property. We have our Hawaiian people dying on the waitlist. My father was one of them. And so I'm going to be very strong about that. I'm glad I have land, but my, my dad died on the waitlist, waiting for his hale, not his Kahali, his hale. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I just, I, I don't know the answer to your question. I do know that my interaction with the Governor's office, though, they're very, very aware of, I don't want to call it sensitivities because it's the right thing to do, but they put a lot of effort into ensuring that, that the Hawaiian words are used properly. And I'm not saying that that's in this case, but I'm just saying generally that if you, if you look at all the publications, Yokeenas are where they're supposed to be, everything about it. They're very, very careful about that. So. And if you see something, let me know. I will.
Don't worry, Gary. We know you're just, you're the representative. Yes. But before, before you keep digging the hole deeper, we're gonna, we're gonna allow Uncle over here too. Yes, I know. I know. Go ahead, please.
Ole, this is Austin Salsedo. Thank you, Gary, for coming down and representing the Governor. But that's a bad position right now because regard, the, the term of Kahali is just a, just a friggin word to have the, it's kind of deceiving the Hawaiian people itself. And thank you for the definition of that. And that's kind of discriminatory to use in the Hawaiian term in our area of the Hawaiian homelands and deceiving the people of the Hawaiian ancestry. Nanakuli, Y96792, a great majority of Hawaiian homelands over here. But I'm kind of upset of not bringing awareness to the Neighborhood Board because of state operations consisting of the Department of Health. There's a planning department that has overwritten, I have something in black and white, the certificate of need. The Department of Health Planning Department. They can override that of a, of a community input study. They get, that's a little blur on their certificate of need. That's the reason why awareness needs to be brought to the enabled boards in the 96792. Not only Department of Health, but you also have the jail diversion program, but it's the Public Safety Office. Instead of bringing prisoners into keeping them inside or giving them in a, over at YPO to hold them in that area, you bring them in residential areas under the jail diversion programs. Another one too is a court conditional release programs also under Act 26. That's all state operations as well. They're bringing them into residential areas without making awareness to the Neighborhood Boards under conditional use permits. So with that said, making awareness as well to this Kahali. Mayor had brought up a, maybe I should bring this up to the mayor's level. This is the same consistency, but Leahi Behavior and Medical Respite. Okay. When a homeless individual goes to the, to an emergency room treatment, they get released into recovery at this Leahi Behavior and Medical Respite. It started in June, mid-June, this, this program. It goes into there. Thereafter, it goes into residential areas, into transitional housing.
Well, what have you concluded?
Okay. So.
With the questions?
With that said, it still needs a conditional use permit before the Neighborhood Board. Okay. So all state operations is looking at this way because that Leahi before, from the Queens, they go right into recovery at the Department of Health, those little homes. Now, I think they're disbanding that. Now they're sending it to Diamond Head and Kalihie at the Leahi Behavior and Medical Respite. I don't know what respite means.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. We'll save those questions for mayor's rep. But thank you very much. So, okay. So we're going to conclude this, this part of the report. No, that was the last question. We got to move on. We spent 20 minutes already on this. But Gary, I will say, first of all, happy anniversary. Happy one-year anniversary. We do appreciate you very much. So please know that you always come here with a positive attitude. You come in person. We appreciate you. We know that you're the messenger. So please don't take anything personal, but thank you and we appreciate you. Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I will be actually going through you to bring Mizuno here to our Neighborhood Board next month. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. Very good. Up next, mayor's rep. Please go ahead.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Board Chair, members and everyone in the community. I'm Erwin Koata with the Board of Water Supply and Mayor's Representative. So for this month, I just wanted to share some highlights from the mayor's monthly, this month's mayor's newsletter. First, there was that Festival of Pacific Arts and Culture that Honolulu hosted back in June 6th through 16th. There were a number of delegates that participated, and it was a very successful event. The city also took over 400 acres of former Navy land in Kalailoa that's going to be used for, or at least earmarked for recreational use. Just talked recently, just Austin's question about the, the city just opened a behavioral and medical respite facility at Leahi Hospital for homeless individuals suffering from wounds or illnesses. I did get that question. I'm going to note it down and then submit it and get an answer for you. The mayor also, and of course, Skyline just recently made its one-year of operation. There were two questions from last month. First of all, the St. John's Road speed mitigation, requesting some speed humps. DTS is going to conduct an investigation on that, review the area's collision history, take a look at the site, do a survey and then report back to the board their findings before February of next year. There was also a question about the Economic Development Project on Farranton Highway that involves the, in Department of Environmental Service of property, that according to DPP or Department of Planning and Permitting, the Land Use Permits Division doesn't have anything on that particular property. So they're going to be following up with environmental services. And that concludes my report for this month. Thanks. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Board Member Corona.
Yeah, Erwin, thanks. Just for clarification, for the, the question for the, the speed mitigation issues was not so much on St. John's Road. It was on the, the, the street behind Mailei, Mailei Elementary School, which is actually, I think, I think that was also Calcom, Calcomana Road. There's a lot of Calcomana roads back there. So, but it's right behind, it parallels Kulaapuni. And so that's the actual location where students are picked up and dropped off. So we worked very hard to get Kulaapuni speed, speed humps put on there. But because the road behind it, that's a city road, Kulaapuni. The road behind there, the one that the resident was talking about, it's a private road, unfortunately. But that is a, the primary drop-off pickup location for Mailei Elementary. So maybe we can go back and, because it concerns me that they're going to do the same pattern they did with Kulaapuni is I'm going to wait six months or actually eight months for a response. And then it's just, it's the wrong, wrong street right there. So maybe we can follow up with them on that.
I'll follow up.
If we need to, it's a state thing too. We can maybe collaborate with the state, but I'll work separately with the state.
All right.
And then on the Environmental Services one, I, it's, it's DHL land. And, and they're the ones that are going to, that the way they explained it last, last board meeting was that they're going to let the lease lapse and then re-lease it to this, the, the Homestead Community Association. So I, I'm not sure if DPP would have any use in, or any purpose in that since it's DHL.
Yeah.
But, but Department of Environmental Services certainly needs to be tracking this because it affects the whole entire Leiricoes without a collection yard for the vehicles.
Yeah. We did submit the question to Environmental Services where they haven't given us. So their reply is pending.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Erwin. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We have Board Member Myers online. If you can go ahead and meet yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Erwin, one of our community members, the Salsedos, has sent us an email to alert us that the mayor is talking about supporting Kahali projects in 96792. And so I guess the only one that can give us the answer is Sam Moku. My concern is that I just went on the state website and John Mizuno said, the definition for Kahali is, Kahalae are communal living spaces, often envisioned as tiny homes with shared bathrooms and kitchens, though Kahali could also be created in an existing apartment, dormitory or office building. So again, communal living spaces, but then also said often envisioned as tiny homes. My concern is that he also stated that there's 10, currently there's 10 Kahalae statewide. And that is what John Mizuno said. We all know that we got transitional shelters. We got Kahali. We got the US Vet, that's communal, communal. That's right by Y9 intermediate. You drive by, you can tell it's communal because of the way the tent, et cetera, et cetera. We have a lot of transitional shelters. We got them in Mailei, everything. So I think what we need from the mayor is, what is his understanding when he says that he supports Kahali 96792? Is he taking what the state, John Mizuno said? There's only 10 statewide? And when I looked at the list, none of them is in Y9 or 96792. It starts, there's one in Kapolei, I think Sinti Resentis one. And then there's others, which is public housing, one of the ones, public housing. So I just want an answer from the mayor as far as when he made that statement, can he get back to us and tell us when he's, can he tell us in a lump sum from Sam Moku, city, state and federal in each zip code, what do they see as emergency shelters, affordable rentals? Can we get a list so, and clean and sober? Because we are a community, 96792, not 96707, which is Kapolei, but 96792, that always getting all of these types of things for, to serve the entire island of Oahu. So I just want to know from the county of Honolulu, why are they announcing they want to put more into our community? So mahalo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just wanted to comment. Earlier this year, I did put in a request for Sam Moku to come up to the Neighborhood Board and kind of talk about, you know, the homeless program and their efforts to address it. So I'll submit it again and ask him to come out and speak.
Very good. Yeah. Thank you. We'll follow up as well. Thank you. Go ahead. State your name.
Hi. Blessing again. Okay. I don't know how to go about this, but I'm just going to say it. This is for the Governor and the mayor. Mahalo for recognizing my position and addressing the concerns that I had in the past board meetings with the Y9 Neighborhood Board. Unfortunately, I need to flag something because it has to do with the housing situation here where the community is not aware of and whatnot. I've been involved, of course, you know, you all know my position and whatnot. And I'm very concerned when it comes to where the community is not aware of why the Governor is not moving a certain way or is moving a certain way, as well as the mayor is moving a certain way and whatnot. I hear what the Governor and the mayor is saying. I'm aware that they have addressed the concerns that I had, especially concerning the criminal activities. But we're now looking at the housing situation here on this side. And I'm going to flag this to the, the state of Hawaii. Our people are dying on the waiting lists. We need that cleared off. The sirens needs to get taken care of within a month. 96792 is as important as 96707, 96706 and all the other numbers. We are not going to wait to be another Maui. I heard you guys on Maui and also Kauai. Oahu is not going to end up being burnt down as those, although you see in our power, as we help each other. That's aloha. Now, please look into this. Kapuna Council, there's a 501(c)(3). Governor, mayor, pay attention to the Neighborhood Board, meaning they are the community. They are the voice for us. Please go to them. I've been attending with them. I am still with the Kapuna Council because I love them very much because they are our Kapunas. But their gearing is 501(c)(3). Do not continue your relations of what is, you believe to be going for the community as well as the Hawaiians in our future in the Kingdom of the Ko'aveipaina. I'm speaking as Diplomatic Minister. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll take the last question here for mayor's rep. Go ahead and then we'll move on to Board of Water Supply.
Awesome. Erwin and Gary. Okay. Solution, solutions, right? Instead of why we always complain is because we have too much of this transitional housing on the 96792. Myrija Bucuro, Senator, introduce SR 53 to get a measurement, basically comprised of city and state. And we're a task force. We're still waiting to put this thing together yet. Okay? We did something over at Makaha, O'Kornet's property. But the solution is getting this information because we, the mayor's rep, we need, we don't have law enforcement. Our homicide rates had risen 80% on the 96792 in the year 2023. With that said, why are we bringing more entities that has problems, behavioral problems on, on the 96792? This entity should be taken away. It shouldn't be here. We don't have the resources, jobs, again, law enforcement. We don't have it on the 96792. But we are absorbing all these negative behaviors that are coming over here. They are not from here. They're migrated from, from Chinatown, Waikiki. They're migrated here because of drug treatment centers like in Makaha. They're attracting under the Hawaii cares. There's a dispatch number for psychological help with medical insurance. Okay? That, that dispatch line that distributes all this air and sets appointment like to the Makaha. So these people are set appointments to come to the Makaha Treatment Center. So these people are not from here. So we need these entities out of this area. And it's important to any type of, again, transitional housing. This Leahi Behavior and Medical Respite, this was introduced basically by Anton Kronke. So it's a partnership with Anton Kronke and John Mizuno on the state side. So both, we need collaboration. So both, we need collaboration here, but bring it before the neighborhood board to set the heartbeat here. Cause we are, they're an elected official body of people for the people. So we need to be presenting all this type of, uh, introduction of this, this type of operations. There's no discriminatory, discriminatory factors here. The operators of these operations are not disabled. It's the clients are disabled. So that's how it is. There's no discriminatory, there's no, uh, people law on this thing.
Yeah.
It says as well, okay, that's all I have.
Very good. Uh, Erwin, if you could, uh, put also in a request, uh, to have Sam Moku attend our neighborhood board meeting next month, I think we could clear up a lot of these questions. Um, yep, okay, and very good. So we're moving on to, uh, Board of Water Supply. Go ahead, Erwin.
Thank you for Board of Water Supply. Um, last month, there were no main breaks. Uh, the only announcement we have is that, um, there's the annual uh, Unthirsty Plant Sale at our Halaba Zero Escape Gardens, Saturday, August third, from nine to three P M, nine A M to three P M. And I'd have to take any questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Board of Water Supply? Okay, seeing none, no community, no online. Okay, let's move on, uh, to Councilmember Andrea Topola. I see that Kika is online. Erwin, thank you very much. Uh, Kika, if you wanna go ahead and give your report? We can't hear you, Kika. Not sure if you're talking, but, uh, you are unmuted though, just so you know, but we cannot hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you are. We can hear you. Thank you.
Very, thank you, Board. Uh, um, but I am.
Okay, very good. Anybody questions for Councilmember Topola's office? No board, no community, please go ahead. Oh, uh, we do have a board member. Uh, Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Kika. Um, I had requested a couple months ago, um, if we could, the Housing Committee could have, uh, the things that Councilmember Topola had put together at the Count, uh, Homeless Forum that she had hosted last year. And I was told I would get a copy of it, so I think we wanna get it into the Housing Committee so we can start addressing and having discussions. Um, because I think she had did the forum for some solutions. So if that, you can email me or David. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Go ahead. Question for Councilmember?
Kika and, uh, Councilwoman Andrea Topola. Uh, Kika, you heard the dialogue that's been discussed about the KI, uh, the Kahale's on the nine six seven nine nine two area. Uh, I'd like to know the position of our Councilwoman as far as this discussion, especially being, uh, introduced by Anton Cronkite under the mayor's, uh, July newsletter. What is the position? Does she stand by the community? Or does she support the Kahale projects that the cities, uh, continue to do this? And the partnership with John Mizuno as well to sending the, like tomorrow is gonna have a Kapuna Council and a presentation on this. Where does our city councilwoman stand? Does she support it? Or not? That's my question.
She, she actually does. Did ask the city. Um, stop Kahale. On the I do want her to explain on her own, uh, when this month. She talked and wrote a letter. We could share that that she wrote on her it's about Kahale. One, the and two, having with the community on having more Kahales on our side.
I thank you. I applaud Councilwoman Topola on this. We love her and to support our nine six seven nine two. And I'll just add this information too. Under the State Attorney General, there was a letter made. Any type of transitional housing has to be one dash half mile away from any schools. It's in writing. It was twenty twenty-two, a deputy of the Attorney General. So I support what Andrew is saying and thank you. Love her. Ahuiho.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Kika, if you wouldn't mind forwarding that letter, uh, to us and I can, um, just refresh the board's, uh, memory about her stand on that. I appreciate that. Okay, uh, we are moving on to Representative Darius Keela. Uh, thank you so much. I know you have lots of exciting updates for us. Uh, go ahead, take it away.
Hello, Board Members. Thank you, Chair. Okay, uh, please indulge me sometime. I'm aloha, Board Members. Thank you for your folks' continued engagement and understanding. I just wanna start off and say full transparency, since May thirty-first, uh, we have been without a state senator and in all honesty, Auntie Doreen and I are managing the district to the best of our capacity. Uh, and it's been a busy summer and I just wanna preface that and appreciate any understanding you've, or patience you folks have extended to us. Firstly, I just wanna publicly come out and say that I condone any and all acts of violence against public or elected officials. I did release a statement online, if you'd like to read it further. Regarding our district, Hiko held their PSPS informational meeting to a crowd of almost a hundred people on July first. I wanna clarify, there was no power turned off on July one. Instead, adoption of protocols and procedures in a last-minute effort should Hiko need to do this. Hiko clarified many things for this meeting and I encourage folks who have questions to potentially watch the live stream that was held online under Facebook for folks to view. And they have committed to doing several more community engagements. SPO enforcement was recently done at Puka Pants. And I wanna share that the county was short-staffed and if DOT did not step in, there would have been several tons of trash left at the beach too. Who know when it was gonna be done? So the SPO enforcement was done Thursday, DOT came Friday, collected several tons of trash left. Um, so I just wanna seriously thank DOT. Um, the Uliava Canal was dredged and I will share that this was long overdue. And we have been stressing to our county to commit to a routine schedule. City and County has worked at the canal. The Y-Nine Corporation crew found a white foamy substance. This is separate from the dredging in the Uliava Canal, which is the cause of this horrible smell. Several constituents and members have reached out about this. After using leaf blowers to consolidate the foamy substance, the crew then used a vector, a, a vector truck to vacuum and suck up the substance. After that, the crude odor is improved to the smell. The cause of the smell, white foam, is caused by decomping organic material. High temperatures are rising to the surface causing the gas. The corp will work closely. We continue monitoring Uliava Canal for any white foamy substances. Last month, June twenty-fifth, I convened our Native Hawaiian Intellectual Property Working Group, which was adopted from each year one oh three twenty-three, uh, in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I did not know that we would end up shutting down what was, what was causing outrage online, the Okeha group by the appropriation and stealing of that name. The goal is to promote the group to present a comprehensive report to the legislature next year. And I will continue to keep the board updated for any public engagements with the working group. On June twenty-sixth, we held a town hall with Department of Agriculture and Department of Public Safety. This is a great meeting and O'Leal did record. I appreciate the opportunity to do these with you folks. Upcoming town halls, if you folks can please note. On July twenty-fourth, this town hall will feature a presentation and talk story with the representatives from Department of Transportation Services, Department of Transportation, and Michael Walker from the DLNR Fire Management Administration. This will begin at six P M and Nanakuli High Intermediate School. Ultimately, the scope of focus for this is to give updates to our community. But for you folks to know how DOT, DTS, and the Department of Land and Natural Wildfire Resource Management has collaborated to make sure that our district is safe. And then on August twenty-seventh, a town hall will feature the presentation of Department of Fine Homelands. I wanna emphasize that the town hall begins at six, but at five o'clock, the first hour is set aside for residents who reside in the Hawaiian homelands or on the waitlist to meet one-on-one with staff from D H H L to discuss concerns about leased property or waitlist. I encourage you folks to attend if you have those questions. As I got to share earlier, there are speed tables coming to Kailana's and next week's installation will begin. I've, after the resident, um, Kavenna brought up, DOT, DTS, the D H H L has been contacted to facilitate the conversation to extend a full implementation into the neighborhood. The candlesticks fronting second save, which are called delineators, the yellow sticks, were replaced last month after being taken out by a inebriated driver. I do wanna let you folks know that we've had no accidents in the area since that was installed last year. I mean, we've had fender benders, but the T-bones are happening, like people leaving the shopping center. So it's really great news. I wanna publicly also just let you folks know, one of my colleagues in the legislature passed away, Mark Nakashima. And, uh, he was only sixty-one. He represented the communities of Ha'ouakua Coast and Hilo, and he will be greatly missed. Tomorrow here at the Nanakuli Library, July seventeenth, from nine A M to three P M. The City and County Rental Utility Relief Program will be here. So if you've never been an applicant, please, 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 I encourage you to come. I also wanna share and state that I really, that I constantly have told folks who brought it to my concern. I understand the angst of the poor of concerns of potential Kahale after Director Watson sporadically spoke. I wanna remind folks that these lots are zone residential and held in the inventory of D H H L. So the idea of a Kahale may only manifest into just an idea, but nothing more. Kahale knows and concerned and expressed disapproval, but using potential homestead lands to house on, to, to house non-beneficiaries. DOT has confirmed that the Maipula Bridge is on track for August completion, but I just wanna emphasize that a completion of the project will be done in August, but it will take time for the construction site to de-scale and do smaller repairs to make sure the road is fully functional, but they are on track for that. Uh, last session, thank you Board Myers, Member Myers for bringing it up. The last three point four million dollars are allocated and encumbered in the state budget that was passed this year for the completion of a twenty-four-seven access route between Pa'akea into Lululele Naval. I wanna emphasize, I really think it really was a community effort to the point of my predecessors, Senator Shimobukuro, community support, former board members, current board members. I just was the last piece to close it. I, so I really wanna publicly say and thank you folks for that. This is slated for April, May twenty, twenty twenty-five completion. And the stoplight at Kalakama Road has finally been installed, but the county still needs to program that and it'll be coming online shortly. Again, I wanna emphasize and gratitude to DOT for being the folks that moved this forward. And at this point, that's my report for the month.
Very good. Thank you very much. Board Members, any questions for Representative Keela? Okay, very good. Wow, that was such a thorough report. Okay, we're gonna move on to community.
Yeah, we had a couple months, I know.
Still trying to process.
Yeah. I want everything I just said, I'll email it to you, to Chair, and she can forward it to you.
Yeah, it was great. All, all just really, um, rich information and results. So thank you very much. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to community. Uh, go ahead, state your name.
Aloha, House Representative Dersky. We are proud of you for how you support this community. Not only that you come, you're here for District Forty-four, but you actually sit in person at District Forty-five's Neighborhood Board. We're proud of you to do so. I invite you onto that and continue. Well deserved. But I do ask for an upcoming legislation bill. As you see the position of our Councilwoman, Andrew Topola, she, she covers from Kaiana Point all the way to Ever Beach. The nine six seven nine two, I need a bill to be made that no more transitional housing, adult residential care homes, art, art under the Department of Health, no to a jail diversion program by the public safety. No more car conditional release into transitional housing on the nine six seven nine two. We need it now because we lack the resources, job, and law enforcement. Cause we have bad behaviors over here. Every month, we either got stabbing or shooting, or somebody died from a shot. So I ask of you to write the legislation in the House. Then we'll find somebody at the Senate level, because we have no senators right now, to do the same, to do a companion bill and to support this. So to both either city or state, but the state will actually direct the city to do this. Because the safety, this is safety for the children. I can show you the letter from the, the Deputy Deputy of the Attorney General back in twenty twenty-two stated, one dash half mile away from any children's schools. This is a safety subject matter of any schools. I know a lot of them that's out in the Makai area that's close, even fifty feet away from the Y-Nine High School. The name Kahale Kamile. Okay? Hundred thirty-four calls was made from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, September fifth, where there was a stabbing on that property right across the gym, just forty feet away from the high school's perimeters. That Aole gotta be stopped. That's operated by the city land management. So please introduce a bill. I request for that. No request, I will demand for that. Appreciate that. Thank you, House Representative.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh.
Chair, one, one more thing. Um, I'm, two things, sorry. July twentieth, this Saturday, Nanakuli Village Center. They will be having the Nanakuli Knights Marketplace, so they were just asked if I could share that. And then regarding HPD interactions, this is what I've done and you folks can do the same thing. And I'd be more than willing to be the vessel to help. You call nine one one, non-emergency. Before you hang up with the officer, request the number of the, the case. Please send it my way and we can get a formal follow-up like that as well. Every single time at ten o'clock, I call HPD to enforce park closure hours at Nanikai Beach Park across from my house. And I ask for a follow-up, send it to CPT, and they have noted what happened or what didn't happen. And so I, I know it's ridiculous to constantly do this, but I'm willing to help facilitate that. So when you're doing those emergency phone calls, take that information, follow up. I'd love to help.
Very good. Yeah, thank you very much for offering that. Uh, we'll go over to, um, hold on one second. We'll go over to Board Member Tektar.
Report. Uh, my question would be, um, if you could follow up with the Board of Education or Department of Education, is it true that they're going to eliminate all the libraries on the campuses? Please find out. I mean, cause I attended, uh, um, a convention for the P T S A, which is Parent Teacher Student Association and, uh, the national president made an announcement, uh, as far as libraries slowly being phased out of the schools. Um, and if so, why? I mean, I can look at one campus and there is one closure I saw.
Okay, I will send that to all you folks. The request is to follow up the Board of Education. Is there a plan or talks of eliminating school libraries on campus? Okay.
Okay, very good. Awesome. Thank you very much, Representative Keela. We appreciate you doing great job.
Good night.
Awesome. Very good. Okay, uh, we are moving on to Army Representative, uh. Go ahead, if you can introduce yourself. Thank you for being with us in person.
Good evening. I am not Lieutenant Colonel Cappas. Um, however, I am his enlisted advisor. Uh, I got three notes for, for the board this evening. US Army Garrison will host a job fair on August the twentieth from eight thirty A M to two o'clock P M. Um, this will be held at the Helamono Military Reservation or H M R Military Reservation Training Room. Um, advanced applicants can apply at W W W dot H I M W R or Hawaii M W R dot com. Um, my second note, there's a training advisory for the island of Oahu. Uh, we will still be conducting day and night live fire to include mortar and artillery fire. On this goes, of course, through the end of the month. And then lastly, the Oahu environmental impact statements concerning current military training areas. Um, those things are still being accepted with the portal closing on August the seventh. Uh, to submit a statement in writing, you can Google Oahu Army E I S. And the first link will take you directly to the website in which you can submit, um, your statement in writing there. I'm pending any questions or comments from the board or memory or community members.
Very good. Uh, Board Member Tektar, um, excuse me, Board Member Agustin.
Thank you for your presentation. If you could extend the invitation for, uh, your lieutenant to attend our next Land and Water Committee meeting on August first from six to eight P M at the Kalaniana Ole Festival, um, Kalaniana Ole Beach Park, the multipurpose building. So this meeting, we're gonna be discussing the um, environmental impact statement that was released for Makua Valley. And if he can be present to answer any questions in relation specifically to the submission of um, anybody who wants to be present, how to go about submitting a response for the, uh, environmental impact statement.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Uh, community, none online. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Uh, please give our aloha to Lieutenant Colonel Cappas.
I will. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, up next we have Navy Representative. I do believe we have, uh, Jewel in. Jewel, Jewel?
Yes, I'm here virtually.
Okay, go ahead, Jewel.
Okay, well, uh, aloha. How's it everyone? And I know our time is pretty short and I was virtually, I mean, in person last time, but I sent a full report to Samantha as well as Para Jeffrey back there. So, but I do wanna highlight two things. The number one thing is that as of last week, Thursday, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam actually had a change of command. So we no longer have Captain Mark Sohini as our commander. So he retired last So he retired last week Thursday, and now we have a new commander. His name is Captain Samuel White. So he is our current commander as of last week Thursday. And then the second thing I do want to highlight is, you know, with RIMPAC going on and listening to everyone else that was speaking about sirens as well as wildfires, you know, RIMPAC actually has uh, they've been doing something called like a Pater, which is like humanitarian and disaster response thing. So actually, the Star Advertiser like wrote something today, if you saw on their paper, in regards to RIMPAC. And then it says disaster response training grows. So that's a positive thing that we have going on for the Navy and actually included nine different countries. So again, with all these natural disasters happening with like the Maui wildfire as well as, you know, Kauai recently as well. So we are being prepared and training for these kind of things. And moving on, I'll just push the rest to Uncle Vic, because I know our time is very short and I want to cherish everyone's time for tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Jewel. The floor is yours.
I cut you, Jewel. That's right. The emergency response from the for the RIMPAC exercises. That's awesome. And I have one thing to share as well. This happened on July second. We had a Lululele Cultural Site Wa'aka'i. Um, Uncle Bill and Melva, Ayla, Eric Inos, Kumuke Fukura and Haumana from Wainai High School all went up there uh, to uh, to check out the Heau. The Niui Niue Ula Heau specifically and other cultural spots. And this was an awesome request. They all enjoyed and appreciate the visit. But the Puna and Haumana want to do more than just visit. They want to restore. They want to clean. They want to help fix the place up. I think that's awesome. Also on that Wa'aka'i was our Chief of Staff Ted Carlson, and he totally supports that. So this is awesome. For more information, call Uncle Jeff Pontaleo. I have his contact number and we could fix you up. Uh, that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Very good. Uh, Board Members, any questions for Navy? No, none online, none in the room. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for joining us. You have a great evening. Jewel, we appreciate you. Thank you for being uh, with us virtually. All right, we're moving on to Board Business, uh, election of officers. Uh, we, this is around the cycle, one year mark where we've got to uh, do officer election. So the officers that we're going to be voting on tonight will be Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary and Sergeant Sergeant of Arms, Sergeant at Arms. Sergeant Sergeant at Arms. Okay, all right, uh, very good. Uh, so uh, first up is Chair. Do we have any nominations? Go ahead, use your mic.
I nominate Samantha Decort for our Chair.
Second.
Okay, um, accept. Any other nominations for Chair? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Call for the question.
Oh, go ahead. I apologize.
No, call for the question.
Oh, okay. Uh, very good. We'll go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so all those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. Uh, the ayes have it. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate serving as your chair and will continue to serve with excellence moving forward. Uh, next up is Vice Chair. Uh, any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Naomi.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any other nominations for Vice Chair? If not, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All right, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor for Naomi Hanohano Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the vi- I'm sorry. Okay, the ayes have it. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Naomi, Board Member Hanohano. Naomi Hanohano is continuing to serve as our Vice Chair. All right, uh, Secretary, um, any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Malia Augustine.
Okay, any second? Sorry, we need a second.
I second.
Okay, very good. Any other nominations for Secretary? If not, we're gonna go ahead and call for the vote. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor for Malia Augustine to be Secretary, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. Uh, Malia, Board Member Malia Augustine will continue to serve as Secretary. And last but not least, we have Sergeant at Arms. Uh, do I have a nomination for Sergeant at Arms?
I na- I nominate Mapuana Tector for Sergeant at Arms.
All right, very good. Do I have a second?
My second. Okay, uh, any other nominations for Sergeant at Arms?
Okay, we'll go ahead to the voice vote. All those in favor of uh, Board Member Mapuana Tector to serve, continue to serve as the Sergeant at Arms. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. Uh, Board Member Mapuana Tector will continue to serve as Sergeant at Arms. Uh, that uh, concludes that part of Board Business. I just want to thank the uh, Executive Board for continuing to serve um, in that capacity. We appreciate that. Uh, we know it's a lot of commitment, a lot of hard work and a lot of sacrifice. Please note that your hard work does not go unnoticed to this board, our community, um, and uh, and we hallow you very much. Okay, uh, moving on to approval of Tuesday, June eighteen, twenty twenty four, regular minutes. Uh, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote on that. Oh, sorry, any corrections? Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. We will go ahead and take a voice vote uh, for the approval of Tuesday, June eighteen, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstention? The ayes have it. Uh, approval for Tuesday, June eighteen, regular meeting minutes. Okay? Uh, and then I'm gonna go ahead and give the microphone over to Jeffrey uh, for July twenty twenty four Board Member attendance at Community Meetings Public Hearing.
Alrighty, so I'm just gonna go down the list that I have of attendance in order for the month of July. Or June, sorry, for the month of June twenty twenty four. Uh, Board Member Augustine?
The on June twenty sixth, the mural presentation. Excuse me, sorry, strike that. I attended the sorry, I'm still going through my calendar. I'm like, June. Um, the yeah, come back, sorry.
We'll circle back around. Uh, Board Member Tector?
Uh, for June, none.
Chair Decort?
Uh, Wainai Neighborhood Board, uh, uh, Nanakuli Night Market. Wine Electric Meeting. Sea Rider Production Anniversary. And yep, and that's it.
We're gonna circle back to Board Member Augustine.
Sorry, the Hawaii State PTSA Convention and the Education Committee Meeting and the Land and Water Committee Meeting.
Board Member Myers online?
June eighteen, Hawaiian Homes Commission Meeting. Uh, can you hear me now? Okay, June eighteen, Hawaiian Homes Commission Meeting in Kapolei. And June twenty second, the marketplace uh, at the village. Myself and um, I, Awo, Ayu, off. That's it.
Board Member Corona?
Oh, yes, I I attended the Hiko uh, Public Safety Power Shut Off Meeting. And uh, Representative Kila's OHA meeting here at the high school, uh, and that's it.
Board Member Ed Hanohano? And Board Member Naomi Hanohano?
None.
I have a correction. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I did attend the OHA meeting as well as the uh, Hawaii PTSA Convention. Sorry.
Yeah, I'll get. Thank you.
Correction, I also attended the OHA Town Hall Meeting at, Kila, sorry.
I have one more correction. I also attended the Kalailoa Partners uh, Solar Meeting.
And one more correction. Ed and I also attended that OHA meeting, sorry.
Alrighty, very good. Okay, uh, we're moving on to uh, Committee Reports. Uh, uh, first up, uh, Transportation Committee, uh, Corona.
Yeah, we held our regular uh, transportation uh, on the third Wednesday uh, of the month in uh, June. Uh, we did not have a quorum, uh, therefore we just had discussion topics. Uh, one of the discussion topics was we we followed up on um, on Pa'akea Road, a confirmation again from the state that August. Well, I'm told August twenty twenty five, there's, there are in my minutes to discuss about the procurement process, the the environmental that they're doing. Uh, they're they're working on contracts, so they're in that process right now. Um, also, uh, the uh, bus stop number six twenty nine move uh, to move its location. Um, which uh, the state has authorized the city to move the bus stop sign, so they're working on moving its location about three hundred feet. Um, uh, further away from that current location, that speed, that speed table, which is causing confusion for motorists. Um, so that's what happened with transportation. Um, moving on to housing and zoning. Uh, we were, uh, we did not have any agenda items for last month. However, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that uh, um, the developer behind Sack and Save um, that's trying to develop that property, did reach out to me and uh, did mention that he is beginning to partner with the US Vets. Um, and who operates the Wainai and and a Kahali in Barbers Point um, to uh, to establish a Kahali behind Sack and Save. Um, his terms, and that's why we talked about earlier tonight. So uh, the developer did reach out for that. So uh, we're still trying to work with that developer to uh, um, to brief the community as a whole and to also uh, uh, follow up on some of the opening items. Uh, and just one final comment on that, the developer also mentioned that they are transitioning, they're going, they're shifting away from the emergency proclamation to a full blown two oh one H um, um, project behind Sack and Save in conjunction with the Kahali. So um, more to follow on that once, so we have more information coming from the developer. But that's all I have for transportation and housing zoning. We are recessed uh, for this month. I originally was not supposed to be here. Um, plans changed unexpectedly, but uh, the agenda still did not go out, so there is no meeting for transportation or housing this month. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Board Member Tector, uh, Committee Reports for Hawaiian Affairs and Parks and Rec.
We did meet and uh, we had a positive uh, outcome. Uh, we discussed for Hawaiian Affairs. Uh, uh, first and last is after establishing committees and policies and procedures. Also surveys done by the committee members, which is a good um, result. Also, uh, the Mo'uku Ahao to let people know that we need to understand our identity before we try to request for any demands. So that we understand um, as we share the family lineage uh, as to um, if we have to stand proxy or help someone from another community. We understand that with the Mo'uku Ahao, we we do have, you know, that mana to share to make sure that we can uh, have positive results. Also, a letter to be drafted to DHHL representing uh, our community as far as the concerns with uh, waitlisters. As far as the Parks and Rec, same to establish uh, policies and procedures. There are some that are in place uh, from the past former board. I will uh, retrieve that and we'll utilize that. And so far, we've had uh, good attendance. Approximately seven, so hopefully we can get more members. And uh, there was a presentation by a gentleman. Uh, his club was a project protecting coral. And they want to come to our district, which we requested him to attend, and I wanted to run it by the board first. Uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, yes, send me the information about the uh, coral. Uh, and then uh, Board Member Augustine, Water and Land and Education.
Water and Land Committee Meeting was held on June twenty fifth at Kalaniana Ole Beach Park. We had in attendance five people and uh, presentation was given by Kuliana Coral Alika Garcia, who had shared that they're gonna be doing a revival. Or are interested in implementing a revival of our coral within the community. So the discussion will go further into a internal meeting with DHHL um, Park uh, City and County Park and Recreations. And also um, with community members who are fishermen and also uh, members who are caretakers of the water source that comes down through Zablands. So if you are interested in becoming a part of that discussion, you can come to our next meeting on August first at Kalaniana Ole Beach Park. It's a Thursday from six to eight PM. Where we will also be discussing the environmental impact statement for the Makua Valley Army uh, retention of the lands. Uh, and so if you can attend that meeting, you're, all the community is invited and welcome to join. Again, that's Kalaniana Ole Beach Park, August first from six to eight PM. For the Education Committee, we had three members present. And I just wanted to make note, uh, we do have our community uh, member who is involved in our board, who has been nominated and um, added to our Education Committee, Valerie Manoa. And she is present here tonight, so we just wanted to acknowledge and thank her for her dedication in um, becoming a part of our education committee. She's a teacher here within the community. So the Education Committee is focusing on working with the schools to see what the needs are as well as our CIP requests. As well as uh, introducing the Neighborhood Board's involvement and wanting to let the community schools know that we are interested in their concerns and would like to present and entertain their um, during their orientations for this upcoming twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five school year. So the NHIS Back to School Bash is July nineteenth. It's this Friday from four to seven PM in the gym and the cafeteria. So thank you uh, to the community and we will be in touch with those who are involved with education in Mahalo.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Committee Chairs, we appreciate your time, commitment and those that are uh, members of these committees. Uh, Board Member Io is uh, out of town, so he won't be able to comment on his committee. Uh, so last announcement, and then we're gonna adjourn. Uh, our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty four at seven PM here at Nanakuli Library and virtually via web app. So thank you all very much online for joining us. Thank you, community, for being with us in person. This meeting is now adjourned.